We are live.
Well, thank you. Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 12th meeting of 2021 meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. King, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Langella. Mr. Satchinelli.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Huberman.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Ms. Revulis.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kides.
Here.
Mr. Theodorides. Mr. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Serenides.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Thirteen present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan moves. Any corrections, changes, deletions, omissions? I don't see any. So all in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Do we have anybody wishing to address the council?
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand digitally or press star nine. I'm not seeing any so far.
Okay, thank you. Ms. King, do you have any correspondence that you would like to have read into the record?
No, Mayor, nothing.
Does any councilperson have any correspondence that they would like to have read into the record at this time? Seeing none, we will close public participation. Thank you. Next item on the agenda resignation and appointments. At this particular time, there are no resignations, there are no appointments, and there are no reappointments. And that brings us to the mayor's remarks, and I'll be quick. Remember, September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month. The day of September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile separate their independence days on September 16th and September 18th respectively. National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder that our diversity is our strength. Let us use this month and every day throughout the year to celebrate the Hispanic community culture and contributions to our city as well as our great diversity. Norwalk vaccine update. As of October 6th, more than 68% of Norwalk residents of all ages, which includes those who are not eligible, are fully vaccinated. Norwalk also has one of the highest fully vaccinated populations of any of the large cities in Connecticut. We continue to offer vaccine at various locations through end times throughout Norwalk. Visit norwalkct.org backslash vaccine for the latest news. Norwalk testing update. Starting tomorrow, no cost COVID-19 testing moves to Veterans Park due to the volume of traffic and the fact that school is back in full swing and after-school activities are gearing up. Testing remains available five days per week, including weekends. Visit norwalkct.org backslash testing for the latest scheduled and updates. This coming Saturday, we will have a gun buyback program. The event will be held at the Norwalk Police Department. Officers will collect and disassemble the firearms, which will later be melted down and transformed into gardening tools. I thank the Wilton Quaker Meeting and the Newtown Alliance for their ongoing partnership. Earlier this evening, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting, the annual meeting of the Family and Children's Agency, where our own Norwalk Health Department, which includes Deanna D'Amore, Teresa Argendezzi, Darlene Hoffler, and led by our own very competent Mr. Lamont Daniels, received the William Murphy Award. If most of you recall, that William Murphy was a wonderful, wonderful man, and we are honored that our health department was given this award in their partnership with Family and Children's Agency and their leadership, actually, throughout the entire state of Connecticut beyond for helping us get through the pandemic and helping us work towards fully full vaccinations and more testing programs and so forth. We're very proud of who they are, and I think they deserve a nice little round of applause. Last but not least, I'm going to ask your indulgence. As you know, the American Rescue Plan has provided money through various communities throughout the nation. Norwalk is fortunate to receive a total of little over $39 million to be applied in certain areas. Now, members of our team, the administration team, have put together what we believe would be the greatest use of this money, providing assistance to the greatest number of individuals. And I would like to have a presentation here this evening so that the council members are aware of what our recommendations are to get your feedback and thoughts on what we've established and what we've put together so we can then finalize the product again and hopefully move forward with helping the city of Norwalk through its recovery, helping businesses, helping individuals, helping nonprofits through this pandemic as they were certainly economically impacted in a negative way over the past year. So I will turn this over to my chief of staff, Leisha King, who will give a little bit more of an introduction, and then we will move forward with the presentation, which probably will take somewhere in the area of 30 minutes, but it's critically important, this process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Over the past several months, the mayor and his team have been taking a look at what the amount of money we're getting, the eligible uses, and the various projects that have come to light over the years as we've been talking to residents about their needs. So we're going to walk you through the presentation. I'm going to try to drive the PowerPoint. So Henry's going to start off, but let me start with trying to share my screen here. Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Henry, we'll turn it over to you, but you're on mute.
Thank you very much. This is the American Rescue Plan Act, also known by its acronym ARPA. And these are the amounts of money that have been designated for state and local fiscal recovery only. Just to give you an overview of the presentation, we'll give you a background on the ARPA Act, the local fiscal recovery funds, and the framework we've developed for funding priorities. We'll review the allowable uses as established by the United States Treasury Department. We'll talk about the distribution of funds and how we propose to allocate them with the proposed funding areas, and we'll go into a little bit of detail in each of the major areas, and then we'll end up with what are the next steps in the program. So what is the American Rescue Plan Act? It was passed by the Congress to provide for a strong and equitable recovery from COVID-19 pandemic. In it, it provides $350 billion directly to state and local governments across the country, including the city of Norwalk, to respond to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Eligible uses of these funds include addressing ongoing public health responses and costs, addressing the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, and supporting city operations and government services. Now, the state of Connecticut does not have operational county governments anymore. So our direct entitlement as a city was a shade under 22 million. The state got funds for counties that they pass through to cities like ourselves, and our share is 17.25 million. So our total allocation of local funds, these relief funds, is $39.3 million. Next, thank you. So the funding is released in two tranches. Half was following the enactment, which we have already received. We received it before the end of the last fiscal year, I believe, in May of 2021. The second half of the funds will be received about a year later, so the end, by the end of this fiscal year for us. This is noteworthy. Many grant programs in contradistinction ask you for an application, which gets reviewed, and then if approved, you get funding. With ARPA, they've done it the other way. They give us the money in advance. They require extensive reporting, and then we are subject to auditing on how we spent the money. The funds will be, remain available until December 31st, 2024. Unexpended funds must be returned to the Treasury. The projects on which we will invest these funds must be completed by December 31st, 2026. Local governments, including counties, are required to provide periodic reports, providing a detailed accounting of the use of funds. Now, the government is very specific about how these funds should be used. There are four broad categories that they've enumerated. Number one, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Number two, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. Number three, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. This would apply most notably to governments where their revenues were dependent on sectors of the economy that really got impacted by COVID. So, for example, cities that relied on tourism revenue or taxes that relate to income tax as people lost their jobs. Number four, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So those are the four categories, and in fact, there are subcategories, about 25 of them, for which we are allowed to invest our funds. Okay, next slide. Some of the allowable uses: community grants, where we assist organizations, nonprofits, that serve the needs of vulnerable populations within the community, particularly those heavily impacted by the pandemic. Economic development. We provide aid to small business and industries that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19 and its effect on the local economy. Tourism, travel industry. Speed the recovery of tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors that are just beginning to mend. Utility infrastructure. Make necessary improvements to water and sewer infrastructures, including projects that address the impacts of climate change. Utility investments should aim at improving the reliability and resiliency of the utility system. Broadband. Invest in broadband infrastructure with modern utility in mind. Broadband efforts should aim in improving reliability, accessibility, and affordability of the internet. Organizational needs. Address needs within town departments or amongst city essential employees that improve the capabilities of staff to respond to public needs and support employees most susceptible to COVID. Examples of allowable uses. So in the area of public health, mental health services, investments to public health facilities that respond to COVID-19, environmental efforts, tree planting and climate impact efforts, enhance mobility efforts. A second category would be negative economic impacts. Job training assistance for those who've lost jobs, small business economic assistance, aid to nonprofit organizations, aid to tourism, travel, or hospitality. Administrative. As we've described, all of these projects, all of the recipients have quarterly reporting requirements. What did you intend to do? How much money did you spend? How do you measure your effectiveness? There's a big administrative burden, and ARPA recognizes that and allows us to pay for some of these administrative expenses. Examples of allowable uses: services to disproportionately impacted communities, childcare, community violence interventions, infrastructure, storm, sewer, and broadband. Ineligible uses: to offset a reduction in taxes. The negotiations, as I understood them, was that the Democrats said to the Republicans, especially states, "We don't want you reducing your tax rates and then getting citizens to move to your states." And the Republicans said, going down a little bit further, "We don't want you making deposits into pension funds that might have been unfunded or less than fully funded in the past." So that's where those first two requirements came from a political agreement. Similarly, funding debt service, funding legal settlements or judgments, deposits into a rainy day fund or financial reserves. They want the funds to be used to help the city recover from COVID. Here's how we have worked in broad categories to distribute the ARPA funds. So we put it over.
Henry, excuse me, Henry, I'm sorry to interrupt. This does not include Board of Education ARPA funds, right?
That is correct. The Board of Education separately is looking at, Leisha, 26 million? 23 million?
I believe it's a little over 24 million.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Exactly.
What's a couple of million here or there? Okay, I'm not allowed to say that. Okay, so this is the 39 million for the city is separate and independent from the 24 million that the Board of Ed Public Schools are getting under this program. So the first thing we said was offsetting tax increases. We're not allowed to reduce the tax rate, but we're allowed to use these funds to offset increases, which benefits everyone who's a taxpayer. So in fiscal year '22, when we developed the budget, we looked at 12.9 million, which would offset the increase in the budget from the prior year, the amount of taxes we would collect. However, subsequently, we have learned that the formula for pilot funds from the state, those are payments in lieu of taxes. Often, there are tax-exempt entities such as universities or hospitals that use services in a jurisdiction. And the question is, how do you balance their tax exemption with paying for the resources that they require? So states and cities have developed a program called Pilot: Payments in Lieu of Taxes. The formula was recently changed, and we expect to be getting an additional $4 million this fiscal year and thereafter, and it was unbudgeted. So we thought we would need 12.9 million of ARPA funds to offset our tax increase. If we use 4 million of the new pilot money, we only need to use 8.9 million of ARPA funds to offset the tax increase. The next year, we, we said, "Let's use half that amount." We don't want to have a cliff, so by using half that amount, we wouldn't offset the entire tax increase we expect in fiscal year '23, but let's assume about half of that. And again, if next year we get 4 million in unbudgeted pilot funds, we would only need to use 3 million of ARPA money. So that total, 8.9 plus 3 million, will use up 11.9 million of the ARPA funds. Capital projects. These are the investments, as we said before, water, sewer, other infrastructure. So we're looking at 5.5 million, 5.4 million in the third year, 4.3 million, for a total of $15.2 million. We will select projects that qualify, but the number one category that everybody talks about is flooding mitigation. So Anthony Carr, our head of public works, will talk in greater detail, but that's where a good portion of those monies will go. Community, business, and nonprofit projects. This would include grants to nonprofits that help support our city, and those are overseen by Lamont Daniels, the head of community services. We would have items to help our small businesses, to help economic development, and that's headed by Jess Vanovich, head of economic development. So we're looking at four and a half, four and a half, 3.2, a total of 12.2 million in a multitude of different individual projects. When we add it up, 18.9 million in fiscal year 2022, 12.9 million in fiscal year '23, 7.5 million fiscal year '24, for a total of the 39.3 million we've been allocated from ARPA. Are there any questions at this time? Okay.
Henry, Henry, this is Greg Burnett.
Yes.
I did have one question. On this particular slide, for the community, business, and nonprofit projects, is there a requirement for those entities to show their initial impact from COVID before they even apply for a grant or any assistance?
So Greg, we're going to go into a little bit of detail on that in the following slides, and Lamont will be happy to talk about what the eligibility criteria is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So thank you, Henry, for running us through the logistics. Now we're going to turn to more of the substantive stuff. I think people are probably more, are very interested in hearing. So Jessica, if you could take it from here to talk a little bit about how we came about identifying what we think are the biggest priorities.
Sure. Thanks, Leisha. So we wanted to use some of the feedback that we've been gathering over the last number of years, and really, it's been over the last three to five years, we've been doing a lot of community outreach, and it's brought in a lot of public feedback, and that public feedback was used to be able to understand what the community wants and how the community wants it. And we were able to use over 16 different outreach efforts that allowed us to understand what those priorities are. And as you can see from this particular slide, they stretch everything everywhere from the POCD outreach, which we spent three years talking to the community about, to the flood mitigation studies that are being led by DPW. We also look to the biweekly community provider calls that Lamont is leading every other week with the, the community groups and nonprofits that are out there. But we wanted to show this slide because we wanted to provide to you information about where the priorities came from and how we're using the outreach programs that we've developed over the last number of years to be able to identify those priorities. And as you'll see with the next slide, we were able to identify more than 150 different, different priorities that have come out of those studies and come out of the outreach. And what you'll see here is a word cloud, and the word cloud is basically a cotton paste of all of the priorities that we've heard, both from, well, from DPW, from the Health Department, from community services, from economic development. And we were able to be able to pull those priorities together to show you some of the common themes that have come out of the studies in which we've done. And there are common themes in the sense of what the community is talking about, and their common themes as to what you've been hearing about as the Common Council. We've been hearing a lot about tree planting. We've also been hearing a lot about drainage and flood mitigation. We've been talking a lot about traffic and safety through crosswalks, the importance of mobility, the importance of quality of life, and also climate, health. We've heard a lot about different neighborhood focus areas. We've heard a lot about playground, mental health programs. And so this is really just a visual for you to see some of those themes. The larger the word is, the more times the theme has come forward, the smaller the word is, the less common, it's the less common the word is in the, in the group that we, that we put together. So this is the slide in which I was referring to, when I said that we have identified 150 projects. So we went through more than this, more than 16 studies and community feedback efforts to be able to identify the priorities. And we came up with an Excel spreadsheet that has 150 projects and initiatives identified in that particular spreadsheet. And the city examined all those projects, knowing that we have a few different funding sources that we're able to work with. We have one, which is the ARPA funding, which is this presentation, 39.3 million. But the city was lucky enough and worked hard enough to work with the MLK Corridor Initiative, 23 different folks from South Norwalk to be able to identify priorities in that neighborhood. And working with Senator Duff, the city of Norwalk received $3 million to focus on those particular properties. We also have a funding source from GGP, South Norwalk Funds, which, as you remember, was received by GGP when the mall was developed, and that focuses on the South Norwalk neighborhood as well. The third is HUD funds, and the fourth is the City of Norwalk Capital Funds. So we know that there are different funding streams available. And basically, what we were trying to identify was what eligibility and what criteria does each funding pot have so that we are able to identify which priority would fit with which funding type the best? And the great news is, and the exciting news is, is that more than 90% of those 150 projects we believe that we have funding for, and the funding, it would come from one of the funding sources that I just described to you. This is huge in the sense of really being able to not only capitalize on the capital budget, capitalize on the ARPA funding, but it also is huge because we will be able to leverage the funding sources that we have to then be able to apply to different funding sources to bring even more money into the city. And that money will then support a lot of the projects that we're talking about. In the following months, the projects will be brought through the public approval process. So although we have 150 priorities, and we believe we can fund 90% of those, each of those projects will go through, and each of those initiatives will go through the public process. RFQs will be released, and RFPs will be released. We'll go through the public process and go through the committees. So you, as the Common Council, will be able to see each of those projects and initiatives in more detail. The projects identified that are best fit for the ARPA funding align with what Henry had just mentioned, the four different buckets and the criteria that the federal government is looking for us to align with. And we've identified five different categories. The first is community services, which will be described by Lamont. The second is small business support. The third is sustainability and environment. The fourth is infrastructure and broadband, which will be described by Anthony. And the fifth is government effectiveness and efficiency. And so we believe that aligning these five efforts and bucketing the five efforts will align with the criteria in which the federal government is looking for.
Thanks, Jess. Now we'll turn it over to Anthony to talk about the 15 million that we are proposing go toward infrastructure projects.
Yes, thank you, Leisha. Good evening, Mayor, Common Council. Thank you, Jess and Henry as well. So this slide, it's a high level view of what we know is coming and what, I know the administration and the Common Council and many residents are seeking, and that's mitigation for a lot of the footing that we're experiencing. for a lot of the flooding that we're experiencing, especially the last two storms. So we know that a tropical storm Elsa, which was on July ninth, that generated approximately six inches of rainfall in twenty-four hours. Four of those six inches were generated in about five hours. And then on September first, we had tropical storm Ida, which generated seven point five inches of rainfall in about nineteen hours. About five and a half inches of that was within three hours. So we know that storms are only getting worse. It is due to the climate change, of course, that is a science that is, could be debated as to reasons why, but we know empirically what we're seeing and what we're experiencing globally, but more so for the city of Norwalk. We know that it's trending in a direction where design standards need to change and where the infrastructure needs to be upgraded. Unfortunately, we don't necessarily have the capacity or the ability to change the design standard, but we do have some, some skin in the game and some ability to improve our infrastructure, to mitigate, not eliminate flooding. So basically, while we have a lot of projects still left to plan, we do have a good sense of where we're going from all the data that we recorded from tropical storm Elsa and Ida. That data was from customer service, field observations from D P W, historic flooding from our database. But it's important that the historic flooding i- is, is a good benefit. But more so, it's nice that we could benchmark the, the current storms from Elsa and Ida. So we, we know that could happen, and we know it's happening more frequently. So over the course of approximately three years, if you look at the top, it has the infrastructure, and we allocated fifteen million dollars. Again, not necessarily be five, five and five a year, there might be a little bit of a split depending on what we're doing for design and construction, which is important because we can't design twenty projects and then bid all twenty out in the same fiscal year. So what's likely going to happen is one year will be design of several projects, small, medium, and large projects. Next year will be the construction. When I say next year, fiscal year. Depending on the size of the drainage studies that we commission, and depending on the size of the construction projects. So if it's a five hundred thousand dollar drainage improvement versus a, a three point five million dollar drainage improvement, there may be some scenarios where the study and the, and the construction could happen within the same fiscal year. But again, it's a little bit far off to plan. But what we do know is that there are areas like the Dream Hollow Estates, which is Betts Brook, Betts Brook Drainage Area, which is Friendly Pond area. I'm pleased to say that project's going off a bid on or around October nineteenth, and that's been two years in the making, to give you a magnitude of how long that planning takes. The next project that is currently under a study, which is almost done, which will have a public forum held in mid-November, is the New Canaan Ponus Avenue watershed study. And I believe that's four hundred and sixty acres, which is about three percent of Norwalk's land mass, twenty-two point eight square mile land mass. So that, that project is almost done with the flooding, with the flood study, which will go to design, and that project will likely be bid next fall in the same manner that the Dream Hollow Estates project would be met this fall. So, and again, for, for span of control and for bandwidth of the department, it wouldn't be the most efficient use of our time if we had fifteen projects designed and, and bid concurrently. It's not good, I've seen that done before. And, and what happens is either the ball gets dropped during design, then it gets further dropped during construction. So we, we will maintain an efficient method and means of how we distribute that, the projects and how fast we get the work out. But there are some areas that I do want to highlight that we, we are aware of, aside from Dream Hollow and New Canaan, Lockwood Lane, Heather's Lane, particularly the area from twenty-one Lockwood Lane over to Heather's Lane, and I believe that includes Georgia Avenue, Glen Denning Street, which is next to Old Lantern, between East Rocks Road and West Rocks Road, Killer Brook Water Course, the Flintlock Road, Powderhorn Road and West Oak Area, Glenwood and Clinton Avenue, which is a two hundred and forty acre watershed, Bowden Street, which there was an existing study done years ago for that. So we're refurbishing that study. Crest Road and Witch Lane, providing storm suicide area. Keely Drive, we're looking into Bonnybrook Trail and Road because we do know there's some undersized culverts there that don't perform well, again, during those superstorms, but we did get a lot of customer service complaints, so not a lot, but maybe four to five. I consider that a lot on one block. Because, and every complaint was centered around where the culvert crossed underneath the road. Culvert equals drainage pipe. So we're looking into the Bonnybrook Trail and Road. And there's several other locations too that are yet still to be defined. But this is more of a high level plan. But we do have a lot of detail from prior information about where we need to start. So we're not throwing a dart at the board and wondering, okay, well, should we do a study or should we do design? We have some studies. We are actually in design with some other projects. And again, that list is not all inclusive. I know the mayor and the chief of staff and a lot of the common council members do contact us when they see things that they feel aren't right, especially with the flooding. You lobby very hard for your constituents, which we could appreciate, and it actually helps us map and pinpoint because we do use that data to figure out where we're going to start. So it's, it's far, very well planned, and I attribute that to my department, and obviously the backing of the mayor and the common council too. So we couldn't do without you. The program is still under development. Again, I'm not going to get into the specifics, although I did list a few locations that will be inclusive. And, and the thing is that, again, we're trying to mitigate these issues. I know some residents expect all the flooding to go away, but for a two hundred to five hundred year storm, you, the amount of money that you would need would be exponentially cost prohibitive to prevent that, to, to get that level of, of engineering. So we will do the best we can with the, with the resources that we have. And, and the ARPA money combined with the upcoming capital request, you know, myself, the, the city engineer, Vanessa Valdoris, we sat down, and we looked at one with staff too, and we figured out, okay, of all the money we need, this is a great start with ARPA. And then we'll supplement what we don't have during the capital for the, for the next two fiscal year capital requests. So again, this isn't going to be done overnight. This is going to take a lot of planning, but we're definitely five steps ahead of it, more than many other municipalities. There's no lack of resources here as far as the staff and, and the backing and, and the support, which D P W does commend, the chief of staff, the mayor and the common council, and the CFO and everybody else for the support. That's where it's going to come into play. So we're excited. This is great. We, we didn't anticipate this, but we're not complaining either. So we will do everything we can to expedite and really look into these studies so that there's a meaningful difference in, in the shortest period of time. But we don't want to do Band-Aids, we don't want to just rush something that's not going to work just as for the sake of doing it, because then it comes back tenfold to haunt everybody here on this, on this presentation. So, and that's not fair to the, to the public. So I'd rather take the time and do it right than, than, than do a Band-Aid approach. But with that being said, I could turn it over to goal number two. Henry, if you want to speak a little bit about the improved access for the, for the high-speed broadband internet for the residents?
Sure. One of the things we are exploring is high-speed internet for the entire city. Right now, we have two providers. They charge us full retail prices, both for our use. And the way internet works, the private companies tend to wire cities based on density. So areas that are less dense get, are the lowest priority to them. Secondly, because they are for-profit enterprises, they tend to focus on high-income residents who will subscribe to the more expensive plans, which are more profitable to them. As a city government, we want to try to address the lack of accessibility and the lack of affordability. Accessibility, meaning we're not wired and we just can't deliver service to certain areas. Lack of affordability says if the plans are not inexpensive enough, then some citizens won't be able to connect. Now, I know the, the schools have done a remarkable job during COVID, working with our utilities, making sure there were hotspots, that all the children had Chromebooks and were able to utilize the technology. What we're exploring is what would it take to get high-speed internet for the whole city? It's a challenge because the costs are very high, but this is a unique time in U S history where the federal government is not just endorsing it, but they're offering grants for tens of millions of dollars. And that would require a public-private partnership with a private company that would work with us on designing the network and explaining how we would implement that. The government wants to avoid allocating funds and then nothing getting built. So we're exploring that. It might take a large amount of money that we might not be able to secure. And it's a question of, is there a minimum number of dollars that we can use to improve this area? So it's still under exploration, but obviously something that we think would add good value to the city with these funds.
All right, thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
If we could move on now to Lamond to talk about the community support.
Sure, and good evening again, common council and councilman Barnett, I'll definitely be able to answer your question. But so the community service support, many of you all know, many of you have experienced it firsthand, that as this department was launched, we have been able to engage quite intimately with many of the organizations and many of the service providers. And so as Jessica mentioned, through our biweekly call, through working with our partners, talking with our partners in Norwalk Acts, our senior providers, calling many other organizations, we devise these priorities that have been really impacted by COVID-nineteen to serve our residents. And as you can see, eviction prevention supports, homeless intervention areas, behavioral and mental health, early education in childhood, workforce initiative, direct aid to nonprofits, youth violence prevention. These seven areas are actually clearly defined in, in the federal interim rule guidelines with definition categories. So we'll be using the specific categories from the federal government registry in order to award nonprofits with, with some funding to support them because of COVID-nineteen. A next slide for me, please, Alicia. And so before I get to this slide, just because I want to answer, there's, there's a lot of, as Henry, as Henry pointed out, there's a lot of guidelines, and they articulate exactly how you use it. One of the main areas that we'll be looking to is what the federal government calls qualified census tract. And those are our, our low-income, vulnerable communities, and Norwalk has a few of them. So right off the back, that if any organization will provide services in those communities, they will automatically be approved, and it assumes that they have been impacted by COVID. But also, as you probably have heard me say many times, there is certainly a need for mental, mental health services. There is waiting lists very high, so that's definitely the area has been impacted by COVID. So we'll be looking to support the mental health service nonprofits. Food insecurity, many of you have participated. And while we're always thankful and grateful for the Connecticut Food Source, that's not forever. And we know Norwalkers will still need food. So we'll definitely be looking at how do we support our food insecurity programs that has been impacted by COVID. And then lastly, the housing supports. You know, Norwalkers, many Norwalkers have been hit, you know, economically, and we'll be looking to fund those programs. So we are creating what is called the Community Recovery Fund, and we'll be able to award potential funding between twenty thousand to maximum fifty thousand to help support these organizations. I'm not going to read the whole program, but the whole program is outlined. It's a very strict guidelines that we're following from the federal government, and we've also added some other things. For example, you know, you have to be a Norwalk organization, you have to be in existence for three years or more. And there's a whole array of requirements so that we can vet and ensure that the organizations that receive funding, not only are they serving Norwalkers, but they're making an impact. There's also a language in the federal government guidelines around evidence-based. So you just can't have a good idea. You're going to have to prove it with evidence, and we'll be adopting all the evidence guidelines so that when, when we issue our R F P to organizations, institutions to apply, they would have to follow the federal guidelines in order to receive funding through the public funding of ARPA. Next slide, please. In addition to that, the federal guidelines also allows this, the city also to support internal services. And this is to facilitate access to services and produce a more effective and efficient health and social service system. Many of my chair, my chairs here and the committee members, we, we will be able to leverage ARPA dollars with private philanthropy dollars to continue the family navigation program. One of the areas that the, the federal government, the ARPA guidelines actually calls out, which we're really excited, is youth programming, that the impact of youth and the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program is eligible and also calls out violence prevention programs for young people. So we'll be looking for nonprofits who, who do this work well and who, who have an impact and actually can really help young people steer away from any negative activity. We'll be looking to fund them and help them do the great work that they continue to do. And this can be different ways either to scale up of what they're doing or enhance and increase what they're doing in order to support some young people. The youth services program, we have, when we have gone through our reimagined program, and we'll be looking, we're able to use ARPA dollars to continue to support serving our youth program. And then also library improvements. The library is a public place, public, public place, excuse me, and we'll be able to support our library with a specific kind of disinfectant type of furniture. So we'll be looking to support them moving forward because of COVID. Next slide, please. And then lastly, our health department. As you all know, our, our, our health department continues to be a leader, both locally and state. And there's a huge public health component in ARPA, and we'll be expanding our vaccination program, our COVID testing. I don't know if you're aware that we are no longer receiving the allotted funding from the state, but as you know, we need to continue. So ARPA will allow us to allocate funding to continue the great work and to maintain the quality and level of support to support contact tracing, our community health workers, and our public health surveillance. And then the other piece that ARPA allows us to do is really remodeling or relooking at our public health facility. And we'll be working with the health department under Deanna's leadership specifically around adapting our clinical rooms to implement COVID mitigation tactics. And I think, uh, yep, yep, that's, yeah, COVID mitigation tactics. And that's specifically looking at our facilities and seeing how we can ensure that both residents who utilize the health department and our employees are safe. Any questions for that? I know I went kind of fast, and we're kind of moving around.
I think if, probably go through the presentation.
Okay.
Questions at the, at the end? If anybody has any questions, write them down. The team here will be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thanks, Mayor.
I'm going to turn it over to Jessica now to talk about the economic and community development portion of.
Great, thanks, Alicia. So we have approximately four point five million to support retention and growth of small businesses along with job retention and new employment opportunities. We have done this in the past when we launched the Small Business COVID Support Program. That's when we were able to give thirty businesses five thousand dollars each. But just as a point of information for everyone, we had over two hundred applications to that particular program that we were able to do. So we feel it's very important that we support small businesses, not only to retain them, but also to help them expand in the city. The second area that we're looking to focus on is women and minority business support. And that's really important for us here in Norwalk. We're looking to be able to have a diverse set of businesses, and, and we want to really focus on this. This is something that we know the council has been focused on in the past, and we're just really pleased to be able to have a funding source in order to be able to move forward with some of the programs and initiatives for that particular effort. The third is new business support, and this is thinking about seed money and helping new businesses establish here in Norwalk. And the fourth is Wall Street infrastructure improvements. And this is an opportunity for us to be able to implement the restructuring and the reconfiguration of Wall Street, looking at the sidewalks, looking at the roadways, looking at historical lighting. We know that there's a big effort that will be going on through the lockstep grant later this construction season or early in the spring to look at Wall Street between Main and Brook. But we want to be able to do that for the whole entire Wall Street area. And we feel it's very important for small businesses to be able to be successful in that area. And this is one of the ways in which to do that. So as you know, the Wall Street R F Q went out a few weeks ago. We had a large number of consultants come and, and work with us to be able to respond to that R F Q, excuse me, R F P. We're doing interviews for them later this week, but this would actually be the match to make sure that we can implement some of the recommendations that come through the public process that are identified through this study. Next, we are looking at environmental sustainability, and we have approximately two million dollars proposed for this particular initiative. This is really to enhance the city's responsiveness to environmental issues. We've talked a lot about climate change, sea level rise, urban heat islands. We think it's really important to focus on a tree planting program, and we know that D P W is doing a great job with that. But one of the things that we've been talking about a little bit more broadly is an inventory and canopy assessment, where we work through an R F P to be able to bring in a consultant, to be able to inventory all of the trees and really guide us with priority areas for planting trees. But it's not only that, it's actually the implementation of the program, and that's the tree planting program. So where are we increasing tree coverage? How does that work? How are we working with small businesses and private property owners to be able to do that? We're looking for the ARPA money to be able to support those. The second is Climate Action Plan, and this really speaks to a lot of the efforts, again, by the, put forward by the council. Not only are we looking through implementation with the flood mitigation, but we also really want to, we also really want to address the Climate Action Plan in the sense of putting forward recommendations that we can adopt here at the city of Norwalk to make sure that we have a short-term and a long-term plan to be able to address this. And the third is sidewalk construction and connectivity and mobility. It's another effort that we know the council is focused on, but it also has come out through the P O C D. It's another effort that we know the council is focused on, but it also has come out through the POCV. And as you know, we're doing a transportation master plan currently. And a lot of the conversation that has come out of the zoning study and also the industrial study. Is the importance of sidewalk construction and making sure that the neighborhoods are connected. We focused on this through the MLK corridor as well, so we put this under environmental sustainability because we know that as the city becomes more. More equipped with sidewalks, that our mobility will increase and that will also play a role in the environmental sustainability piece. And the third is government effectiveness and efficiency and really excited about this one too, because we know that. Saving time and saving money just helps the City of Norwalk, not only the city itself, but also the businesses that are out there. So here we're looking to introduce technological solutions that streamline programs and processes through local government. So one of the things we've been talking about quite a bit is the online permitting and licensing. And what we're looking for here is really. The support of someone to come in and actually help each of the departments streamline their particular process and link them all together. So we've talked with the the Health Department, we've talked with planning and zoning, building and code enforcement, the Fire Marshal's Office. And I think what we're really striving for here is to be able to ensure that. Someone at home can submit an application, that that application can go through the full permitting and licensing process. That they from their home can actually check where the permit is sitting. And that once the permit is approved, they actually will receive that permit through an email to their. Home in which they can then issue themselves. The second is going paperless, and we talked a lot about this too, it's been part of our capital budget for the last year or so. But we are looking to be able to digitize all of the field cards, digitize all of our site plans. And be able to post all of those through an online permitting and licensing portal. Where the public are able to gain all the information themselves to be able to figure out. If they want to do title searches, be able to do research on their own. We use a lot of hours in the city hall to be able to answer those research requests and we think that. Not only being able to organize them for the city staff online, but also offering them to the public through. An access portal will be a big time saver and a money saver for the city. The third is a three one one program, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with, but this really is. Connecting the customer service platform to each of the departments and making sure that there's a feedback loop internal of city hall. Right now, we do have a very robust customer service platform, but we don't necessarily have the feedback loop that we would like to be able to establish. So this third one focuses on being able to ensure that the departments. Each and every one of them are able to receive the customer service, respond to the customer service and that it's all categorized and filed into an online system. The fourth is enhancing public health data system, which we know especially over the last year or so is extremely important. We want to be able to not only collect the data, but also then manage the data, be able to share that data. And the last is the ARPA administrator. And this one, Henry can speak to probably a little bit more so than I can. But we've included funding here to be able to bring on. An administrator and a coordinator as other municipalities have. To be able to help us with the reporting and managing all of the ARPA funds, making sure that we're meeting all of the federal requirements to be able to spend that money down by twenty twenty six.
Agreed, I thought you handled it properly, thanks.
Thanks Jess, so for the next steps. We're going to take what we've showed you tonight and evaluate all of the projects for readiness, confirm the costs and timelines. Create structure and operational supports and develop processes and procedures to ensure that all of the federal requirements are met. And we're hoping that we'll be able to begin implementing programming by January. And so where does the council come into this? We wanted to start off by showing you guys the broad brush of how we're hoping to use these funds. But as each project gets ready to go, they'll need to go through the traditional public approval process. So each project will come before the council through the appropriate committee to get your feedback. And then have to be approved by common council as they go. Also, we were, the mayor asked us to commit that we will come back to you quarterly. To let you know how we're going in terms of getting the money spent, since you know that there are some deadlines on when this has to get spent down by. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Alicia, and thank you all for the presentation, but very comprehensive and as I'm sure the council will agree. A lot of hard work, energy and time went into this to make sure that we. Allocate the money that does the greatest good for the greatest number of people. We have looked at every possible thing, we've reached out to the public, we've had discussions relative to what. The members of this community feel are important. As you know, just like other communities, Norwalk had had economic impact and we. We had some issues where businesses are struggling, homeowners are struggling. And we want to make sure that we use this money in a way that isn't intended. And so the presentation tonight was designed to show you how we're proposing to use it. But I'd like to now open the floor to any comments, any questions that the council may have. Ms. Shanahan.
I think it's actually fantastic, it's a lot to take in for one thirty minute period of time. But you seem to have covered all of the important bases that our city really needs to cover, be covered. And certainly I for one am just delighted to see the amount of money going into trees and to environmental sustainability. Everybody or as nobody would be surprised. So thank you for taking in to, you know, taking into account these important issues and there's a lot of support for that work and thank you very much. Great job by everybody, you have a terrific staff, Mayor, who really did a fantastic job of presentation.
Yeah, yes, I do, you're telling me something I I know every day. Alicia, we might want to send a copy of this presentation to all the council members. So that they can look at it at their leisure and be able to answer any questions that their constituents may have as well.
Absolutely.
Mr. Livingston.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just follow on the Shanahan's comments. Yeah, it was clear that a lot of thought and energy went into this proposal and I was. While I'm looking forward to seeing the actual details when they come out, I was particularly. Heartened to see the additional funds put towards flooding, which we all know from our constituents is a major issue in the cities. Gratified to see that. I'm also like Ms. Shanahan, you know, very happy to see the energy and funds put towards addressing climate change. As we all know, that is, I was reading something in the paper that eighty five percent of the global population is experiencing weather events and we're no exception. And so I think it's really good that we are taking these steps. To sort of get our hands around it, if you will, and move forward with appropriate actions, so thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the effort and time put into this and your presentation to us tonight. And I concur with both Ms. Shanahan and Mr. Livingston. That, you know, I'm just grateful that we have the opportunity. To have these funds to address some of the initiatives that we have been pushing for, especially around climate. The Climate Action Plan and preparing our city for the future. A sustainable city, which we desperately need. The flooding mitigation, you know, I was outdoor knocking today, talking to constituents who've been deeply affected by this. And so it's just, you know, moving forward, this is nothing but positive for our city, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Hooverman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to echo also a lot of the sentiments that have been said and and kudos to you and your staff. This is a wonderful presentation. I'm going to be very, very interested in seeing how the details come out across the board, how. How everything plays out, the community services piece, the public works piece, all of that, but I'm very heartened by the climate work. I think it's an important step forward for Norwalk and and I think we need to build on it and. Continue with the growth so that future generations are not hamstrung by what's happening now. But I commend you guys, we're really, really nice work and thank you for sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for Mr. Dakwitz, but first of all, I'll say, you know, at the risk of sounding totally repetitive, as. Anybody who knows who's been, I've been talking with both on the council and the community, the need for climate action in our city. Is greater than ever. And so I really want to thank all of the staff and you, Mayor, and. For not only listening to our residents, but working as partners with us and with them to see this through. I mean, we're doing this work for our children's and grandchildren's generation, and so it's also really heartening for me that. We're using this, these funds now, not just to do triage and recovery, but to also try to make that a part of what we hand down to them. Through this work, so thank you. I'm also really excited to see. The economic development piece in particular, knowing that so many of our small businesses were disproportionately affected by like lack of access to PPP loans. I might defer my question after Mr. Burnett and Ms. Young can make their comments. It just has more to do, just to further elaborate for those at home on. Why some of the, the, the tax reduction, the first line on the chart, Mr. Dakwitz, so perhaps I'll table that till till my colleagues speak, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett and Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a great opportunity, it might be an opportunity that we may not see again in our lifetime. And and I'm especially excited about. The assistance that will be given to community, business and nonprofit organizations. To get initiatives off the ground that they might have always thought about, but could never afford. And those are opportunities and initiatives that will directly. Bring, make a difference in families and individuals. In their day to day living and especially their quality of life. The one item that I would like to emphasize though is that as we look to. Provide this funding, that we also work with those organizations to ensure that they will be sustainable. Beyond twenty twenty four, because this money is not forever. And the worst thing that we could do is provide this level of service. Have these initiatives form and then funding no longer exists and then what do we do? They'll be looking to the city, they'll be looking for different entities that continue those initiatives. And that could be a very, I'll say awkward situation, so. I want to emphasize that through this grant process, we definitely should ask. How will these initiatives, these vital programs be sustainable beyond the ARPA money? Thank you.
Thank you, that's a very good point and I totally agree. Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to say thank you to the staff, you know, for their efforts and putting all this together. It really kind of shows that they they've been listening to the community. And 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 we appreciate that and but one of the things that I, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to is the internet. Connectivity. Because what happens so often as we progress in that area. If you are not connected. In that way, you are disconnected in so many other ways, and I think it's time to kind of level the playing field in that area. On so many levels for so many families, and so I'm really interested in that piece. And I, and and just, just to put it on the record, I didn't hear Water Street. Water Street mentioned in that, that piece, so hopefully that, that was just a given. And Water Street would be included in some of that flood mitigation, although I know that there's a lot of work that's going to still be done in the area. But just putting that out there. But again, your staff has done yeoman's work and. All of these areas are, are, are well deserved at being supported because they support the city as a whole. Mentally, emotionally, financially and all of the above, so that we, we end up. With a better tomorrow for Norwalk, so. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Young, Ms. Revolus.
Did a great job, thank you for adding Water Street. Especially since I'm a business owner in Water Street, so definitely would love to see that taken care of. And added, I really, of course, speak, I've always spoke to, so I'm happy to hear the initiative. Especially with our mayor's initiative with pushing for entrepreneur and business supports. I think the question of sustainability comes with pushing entrepreneurship, local businesses. Because again, with that, and I want to just add for you guys just to think of. When we think about like things for affordable housing, for example. Maybe if we change that for business owners. And made like affordable rents for businesses, so we can get more homeownership, that would get the sustainability for the projects all have been said. So that our tax owners, I mean, our taxpayers here are able to afford and sustain that. So just in those ideals of the business. Helping not only businesses succeed, but probably get into places and spaces and using. Investors who would work with new businesses, especially for minority communities to be at a affordable rent. For commercial spaces, I think would also probably be a good thing. So then later in life, those same initiatives can help homeownership, I think would be a great sustainability. And then bam, all the way to health. But this is a great job, I just wanted to give that idea with the ideas that you're using. And hopefully with that money can help sustain some local businesses again to get stronger taxpayers here.
Thank you, Ms. Revolus, and that's why we wanted to make that presentation so we could hear some positive feedback, some ideas that the council may have. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, I, just to follow up.
Oh, yeah, your question.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Then Mr. Dakwitz, that slide where you showed us the breakdown of the allocations and the first line of it. Just for those at home, I mean. To make it, we're not using those funds to offset taxes, correct? It's not an allowable expense. So if you perhaps explain it to us in our kind of plain speak, yeah, thank you.
If I can make a distinction. We're not allowed to reduce our taxes below the rates we've charged in the past. I think that would be called a tax reduction. And that would be disallowed. So our approach was to say. In fiscal year twenty two, our current year budget, when we did our negotiations. We went through all the calculations. And normally we have something called the net tax levy. And there's an amount of money we need to raise in taxes to get to a balanced budget. We looked at that number and compared it to the prior year's tax levy. And that would, that differential would be the increase in taxes. And we said, if we use the ARPA money. To make our budget balanced. Then we would have a flat tax, so to speak, to taxpayers. And we would use the ARPA money to benefit all the taxpayers in this city. That amount was around thirteen million dollars. Okay? We also said. We don't want to have a cliff. We don't want to offset the tax increase for this year. And then immediately next year, it's almost like a two year increase. So we said, let's use half as much next year. We're going to start that budget process in a month or so. For fiscal year twenty three, we said, okay, if we needed thirteen million this year, let's use seven million next year. To bridge that gap. Now let's assume taxes or that. The net tax levy increased by the same fourteen million. Well, if we use seven million from ARPA, then the tax increase would be half. Of what all the normal increases would be. And then in the third year, we would have no use of ARPA money. So that was our original plan, thirteen plus seven plus zero. And that used up about half of the ARPA money, twenty out of thirty nine million dollars. It was then brought to my attention that the pilot funds are coming in and they were never budgeted. So if you think of the gap in the budget to get a balanced budget. We don't need thirteen, it's thirteen minus four. That would be nine. And next year, instead of seven, seven minus four is three. So if we use the pilot money. To bridge that budget gap. It frees up those ARPA funds we thought we would need. And to use them for other purposes. And then we allocated them, I believe it was five million dollars more for the capital projects. And three million more for the nonprofits and the small business and economic development. So we started by saying, how can we reduce future tax increases to benefit all the taxpayers? Everybody's had suffering through COVID. By reducing the tax increases, everyone benefits. And then we use the other programs to look. Based on the feedback we've heard over the last several years, I've used, I've identified. Whether it's flood mitigation, climate change, small business support. And using those. And using those dollars in very specific programs, there will be applications, there will be reviews, there will be RFPs. And that way, we sort of had the broad program on top and the more targeted programs on the bottom. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. I mean, yes, it'll be ongoing, but I do appreciate that.
Let me say that your knowledge after the first 30 minutes is much greater. We've done this and been discussing this for quite a while.
That makes me feel a lot better.
This is just the first layer. But as you go through it over and over, you get to understand the nuances. What we tried to do is give you an overview with a flavor of the detail. But I should address a little bit about the reporting. The reporting is as extensive as I, as I've ever seen. So we start off by saying, what's our plan to use the $39 million? And we will explain to them the different categories and the types of projects. And we will use their coding system. So they have four broad categories and under each category, they may have project 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, and each one has a separate description. So we're going to work backwards from that. When people apply for projects, they have to specify what codes from the Treasury Department, US government, they fit in. And as part of the review process, we're going to determine to make sure that we're spending it on projects that satisfy the Treasury's specification. Then every quarter, all of these projects and programs have to report up. And I guess I'm going to be involved taking all of these reports citywide and uploading it to the Treasury Department to say, here's how we're spending our money. And as I said before, they want to know how much have you spent, how much have you designated? What are those fact-based data sets that you have that show that you're making an impact? It could be supporting documentation like invoices and payments. And we put it in a bundle, we upload it. And every quarter, we have to go through that process. I, I think it's what we try to do, although the government wants us to rush and spend the money, we've taken a little bit of a patient approach, trying to analyze and think through all the ramifications to get the administrative part right. How do we apply, who's, who reviews it, who determines where we're spending it? How do we make sure that someone will be reporting accurately and in a timely manner? And then so that when we submit to the Treasury, I want them to look at our paperwork and say, you people are fine. Let's move on to somebody else who doesn't know what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deckwood. Ms. Young.
I know it's getting late, um, and I don't want to keep belaboring this issue right now, but, um, what's the timeline? I think I heard you say the next step would be to hire an administrator and then, when do you see us starting with some of these projects and are some of these projects already in the works so that we can hit the ground running, particularly when you're talking about some of the infrastructure items? And I'm sure with community services, that could get off the ground right away.
King, you want to answer that question?
I'm sorry. Sure. I think that we're ready to get started as soon as possible. Um, the administrator that we're hoping to hire is really going to be an admin person who's going to be keeping track of receipts, making sure that we get all of the reports on time from the outside agencies, nonprofits, small businesses, et cetera, who are applying for funds. But our staff will be able to administer the actual programs and we're hoping that we can get started right away and start getting things before the council is as quickly as possible because as we've mentioned, there are time limits on the spending of, of these funds and it has, it took the feds a while to get guidance out about what these funds could be used for. And we wanted to make sure that we were going to be using them appropriately. So we, we want to get them out into the hands of the people that need it the most as fast as possible. So I don't think hiring the the admin will delay that, but we'll get right on that as well.
And, and can I just ask one more question? And I know supplanting is always a big no-no. And I'm just so, right? So are these projects that we're doing or projects that were not that, that are not currently, um, in the works, right? It's above anything that we're doing right now, right?
Yeah, I, I had that question also early on because having been, uh, with the police department for many years and administering a lot of grants, we knew that supplanting, uh, was a big no-no. We want to make sure that none of these funds are going to go to things that, um, we've already funded. And, um, if anything, it will be enhancing some projects and programs, uh, making them better and more effective.
I mean, the, the other thing, not to belabor the point, I know that you guys have a lot of other business to take care of tonight. Um, Je- Jessica did briefly mention that we also looked at some of our other funding pots. One of the things that has held us up on being able to move forward on spending some of the MLK money or the GGP money is that there were so many things that people wanted to do and there wasn't enough money to do it. And it was very hard to determine how to prioritize them. But with this additional pot of money, it's going to allow us to do almost everything that's been identified. So we're really excited because so many of the projects that were identified by the MLK Initiative Group, so many of the projects that have been brought forward as potential uses for the GGP money, combined with, with this funds, I mean, you guys are going to be busy on good things, I think.
Thank you, I think.
Mr. Keegan.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Riley. Just, um, processed all of these projects, um, Lisha, they're, they're all going to be discussed and approved in committee, correct? Just like anything else we do.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes. Mr. Hooverman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to circle back. I'll be very brief. Uh, uh, and this sort of follows up on something that, uh, Councilperson Johnson was talking about. And Henry, the, I guess the concern that in you use the word that we've heard used over the last six months, the cliff, that we just want to make sure that we're guarding against the cliff because we get to three years out and we have a taste for something we have to pay for it. So I, I just want to make sure that that is in the forefront of everyone's mind moving forward.
I think that's an important issue, but I'm conflicted. I hear two sides. On one side, I hear these are good programs. We want to make sure that these organizations keep going and keep doing these programs. But they're only funded for two or three years. So it, it's a dangerous trap. And I think it's happened before with federal grants where money is given only for a couple of years. And then the local governments, state, county, or city has to find funds for these programs. Unless they say no, unless they say these programs are temporary and for only three years.
Henry, I think the, the question is about, uh, in terms of the tax offset.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking specifically about the tax offset, not the, not the other programs.
Well, the tax offset is simply a question of we made a determination at the end of last year to offset the entire tax increase for fiscal year 22. And in our discussions, we said, let's use half as much for this coming fiscal year 23. So the taxes will rise, but not as much as if there was no supplementary dollars. And then in year three, it will go up by, by the amount that our costs go up every year and the amount of supplemental funds that will not be there. So let's say, uh, let me throw out a number. Let's assume our costs go up 4% a year. So for fiscal year 22, there was a 0% tax increase. For this coming year, if the costs go up another 4%, it will only go up 2% in a tax increase because half of it will be supplemented. And then if the subsequent year, it goes up another 4%, that full 4% would go into the tax increases.
Thank you. I, I understand that. What I'm saying is that we just, I want to make sure that we're being conscious of that as we move forward. Because we're going to get to a third year and we're going to need to increase taxes at some point. We're going to hit a point where we have to. So thank you.
And that's been discussed and we've, we've looked at it very closely. I mean, if you look at our tax increases over the past several years, it's been in the area of, uh, uh, 2%, uh, 2 and 1/4 or something of that nature. Simply, uh, we have, uh, bargaining agreements that we have to live by. Uh, we have increased costs. Things, uh, the goods and services are increasing, uh, as we speak, uh, due mainly to the pandemic. So we have to be responsible in our budgeting. And we have to make sure that, uh, we keep taxes as low as we possibly can and working together. Uh, I think we've proven that we can do that. Um, but it doesn't mean that there will be zero tax increase, uh, in the subsequent years. Uh, Ms. Revolus.
Back to the fact that I think it just all right or left sounds what council, um, Councilman Burnett was saying in sustainability. So it's all beautiful. It's all great. But as long as we have a method of sustainability for something we're starting, um, we've kept taxes low and giving services, but re- retracting them after three years is something we don't want to do, but our community has kind of gotten used to us retracting services that they do love and appreciate. So I just want to, um, double back on what, um, Councilman said in the beginning, Greg Burnett, about sustainability, both right and left, the tax and the services overall.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments? Well, I do want to thank the team for, uh, absolute, uh, I think a wonderful, uh, presentation. Working hard together, we were able to put together something we believe is sustainable, something we believe will serve the greatest good. But I also want to say that, um, you know, these kinds of, there's no perfect plan. There, there's only perfect planning. And as you go forward, situations change. And the plan can change. As we move forward, there could be something else that needs to be funded and other things that might not need to be funded. This is a plan that's meant to be flexible and fluid and we can make changes as we go along. Uh, the big thing will be the reporting, uh, and we will be, uh, keeping the council, uh, briefed. Uh, as we do our reporting, we will let the council know what the reporting shows, what the reports we submitted and so forth. So, uh, that's one thing. So unless there's no further questions, we can move on. But I did want to mention one thing before we go into the consent calendar, general ca- uh, calendar business. Today, um, I did receive with regrets, Donna King's resignation. She is retiring effective November 16th. But I did want to acknowledge that in front of the council. Donna came on board in 2013. One of my, I believe, better, uh, decisions as mayor, and she professionalized the city clerk's position to a level that, uh, I've never seen before. Uh, she really did a great job, very thorough and very effective. So, uh, I just want to thank Donna for all her hard work. Wish her well as she changes, as she turns the page in her life to a new chapter. And, uh, I, I want to give her a round of applause and, uh, applause and then, um, ask if she has anything she'd like to add. Donna, would you like to add anything?
Sure. I just want to say thank you to the council also. I think, um, we, we work in that office for the mayor, but we also work for the council. And we hope that our everyday efforts are appreciated. Uh, we appreciate you and thank you for your hard work every, every day of the year. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you for all that you've done. And now I will turn the floor over. Yes?
Mayor, I, I just want to say thank you to Donna.
Okay.
This isn't, this, this isn't her first foray into politics. She was on the council. She's worked in Hartford. She's, she's given her heart and soul to the city of Norwalk. And so I just wanted to say it, it is much appreciated. Because sometimes when you move out of one thing, people turn their backs and say they wash their hands of it, but you kept coming back. And so we, that's much appreciated, that your, your dedication to the city of Norwalk. So.
Very good point. And I was remiss in not asking if any council people wanted to add to my comments because, uh, i- the floor is open for that. Ms. Smith.
Just quickly, thank you, Donna. Thank you every, for everything you have done for the council, for the city. Um, I wouldn't be here serving without your efforts. So thank you.
Mr. Burnett.
Uh, I simply want to say, Donna, we appreciate you. You, you have been there for us to provide advice and counsel. You will be missed. And once again, we truly do appreciate all that you do. Best of luck.
Thank you. Mr. Keegan.
Yes, uh, Donna, on behalf of the Republican Caucus, that would be me. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you so much. And, uh, I will now turn the floor over to the council president, Mr. Satchinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I also want to echo that, the, uh, the remarks that Donna, thank you so much for all that you've done and all that you do. We do appreciate you and you will be missed. Thank you. Tonight, the consent calendar is going to be read by Mr. George Siranidis. And, uh, Mr. Siranidis, if you're ready, I'm going to hand it right over to you.
Thank you very much, Council President Satchinelli. Item 6A. One, authorization for discussion settlement, Nika Turner versus City of Norwalk Board of Education Executive Session. Item seven, common council meeting, uh, committees. A community, community services and personnel committee. 7A1, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to accept grant funds from the Ritter Foundation, Empire and Astrid Heinrich Family Foundation, the amount of $50,000 each to support the Family Navigator Program for the period October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. 7A2, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreement, agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to implement the Family Navigator Program Grant for the period October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. 7B, Public Works Committee, 7B1, approve to increase the fee for proposed adjustments to the public works rates and fees set by the Department of Operations and Public Works Fee Schedule as per attached. 7B4, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a Fifth Amendment to the August 28th, 2007 Agreement for the personal, oh, sorry, professional engineering services between the City of Norwalk and A D Caesar Associates PC regarding the East Avenue Reconstruction program, uh, project for an amount not to exceed $95,000 in accordance with the attached scope of services dated September 27th, 2021. Accounts noted. 7B5, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to waste equip for the purchase and installation of one compactor at the Norwalk Transfer Station for a sum not to exceed $233,565.67 through the Sourcewell Awarded Contract Number 040621-WQI, City of Norwalk ID Number 976613. Accounts noted. 7B6A, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with Darren Construction, Inc. for Project RD 2021-2, concrete curb and sidewalks at various locations for an amount not to exceed with an option to extend for two additional terms of one year each. Accounts noted. 7B6B, authorize the chief of operations and public work to execute an order on, orders on contract with Darren Construction, Inc. for Project RD 2021-2, concrete curb and sidewalks at various locations for an amount not to exceed $259,186.14. Accounts noted. 7B9, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a Second Amendment to the original agreement with H.W. Lochner for design and coordination services dated September 29th, 2016 in connection with Walt Bridge Project, State Project Number 201-1076 301-180 for a total sum not to exceed Account noted and let it be, uh, known, this is a hundred percent state reimbursable project. 7B10, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Freightliner of Hartford, East Hartford, Connecticut for the purchase of one 2023 M2106 Freightliner Plow Truck for a sum not to exceed $176,474.20. Account noted. 7C, Land Use and Building Management Committee. 7C1, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a location agreement with BH Phone Company. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a location agreement with BH Phone Company for the filming and production of Mr. Harrigan's. Phone at the Lockwood Matthews Mansion Museum. Seven C two authorized the historical commission to execute change orders on contract with Pinnacle Design Build LLC. For the Mill Hill Jail and Barnsite Accessibility Alteration Project Phase Two. By increasing the change order allowance from thirty three thousand, four hundred and sixty four dollars and fifty four cents to fifty seven thousand dollars, accounts noted. Seven C three A authorize the purchasing department to issue purchase order on Vista Higher Learning. Digital licensing for middle and high schools online curriculum, curriculum materials and textbooks. For a total not to exceed one hundred and fifty two thousand, four hundred and twenty five dollars, accounts, account noted. Seven C three B. Authorize a contingency allowance in the amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars in the event of order adjustments. Seven C four authorized the office of building management's management to execute a change order on contract with. Guardian Service Industries, Inc. to provide project management and labors. Necessary to implement a phase one of the middle school bathroom renovation project for, for the summer of twenty twenty one. For an additional amount not to exceed twenty two thousand. Funds are available in capital budget account noted. Seven C five A authorized the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with. Global Hill Construction Corp, Connecticut for the renovation of restrooms located. In the ground floor of the Health Department Building for a total not to exceed thirty one thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine dollars. Funds are available from account noted. Seven C five B authorize the office of building management to issue change orders on the contract for a total not to exceed. Three thousand, one hundred and eighty six dollars. Seven D Planning Committee, seven D one authorized the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute all documents. To increase the contract amount for marketing services between the city of Narlock. And Dornburg Combat Advertising LLC, fifty thousand dollars. To execute an economic development focused marketing campaign and website, account noted. Seven D two authorized the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a contract with Studio one six two LLC. Lauren Clayton to come, to complete two Martin Luther King Junior corridor or park installations in the, in the total amount not to exceed. Twenty six thousand, five hundred dollars, account noted. And while I have the floor before I hand it back and everybody's paying attention to me. Mrs. King, I want to wish you the best in retirement and thank you for your hard service. I was saving it for the very end. I wanted all eyes on me while I said that. And now I'll hand it back to you, Council President Satchinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Serenades. I'll take a roll call vote on the consent calendar. Councilperson Greg Burnett?
Hi.
Councilperson Dominique Johnson?
Yes.
Councilperson Barbara Smith?
Yes.
Councilperson David Huberman?
Hi.
Councilperson Kadim Roberts?
Hi.
Councilperson Diana Revolus?
Hi.
Councilperson Darlene Young?
Yes.
Councilperson John Kites?
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Keegan?
Yes.
Councilperson George Siranidis?
Yes.
Councilperson Tom Livingston?
Yes.
Councilperson Lisa Shanahan?
Yes.
And Nick Satchinelli, yes. Mr. Mayor, it's unanimous. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Satchinelli. And now, if he's had a chance to take a breath and get a glass of water. The Public Works Committee, Mr. Siranidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven B two. Approved the proposed sanitary sewer extension at one seven four through one seven six Fountain Street to provide sanitary sewer services for. Five parcels through technical analysis that was confirmed that the city sanitary sewer collection system and water. Waste water treatment plant can accommodate the additional sanitary sewer flow generated from the proposed connections. The proposed sanitary sewer extension shall be constructed in accordance with. DPW and WPCA sanitary sewer permits, permit process and sanitary sewer main extension policy adopted July seventh, twenty twenty one. And be referred back to the WPCA Board for final acceptance.
Siranidis, are you moving that?
I am moving this item, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And with us tonight, we have Chief, Chief Carr, can't see anybody's on here. Ms. Valderes, and we also have attorney such you with us to answer any questions or concerns that the council may have. This project has gone by through the WPCA, went through public hearing. There were no concerns or voice comments at the time. And it's now on to the council before it goes back to the WPCA. That being said, chief, if you want to take this over, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you, councilman. So just to give a little bit of background. The of process, this application has been reviewed by DPW and WPCA staff. Recommended to the WPCA Board, in which there was a public hearing, no comments received. Procedurally, it moves forward to the Public Works Committee and the Planning Commission for an eight twenty four referral. Once both of those processes are completed, comes to the full common council as it is tonight. Because the extension of city sanitary sewer is considered an extension of infrastructure. Which is an asset of the cities and per the city ordinance, the mayor and the common council have jurisdiction on whether they choose to accept. Or unaccept or deny additional infrastructure. And that doesn't go just for sanitary sewer. I believe lighting is also included in the city ordinance as well, amongst other things. Again, the staff has no objections to this application. It's five additional lots. The engineer has provided a technical analysis that shows that there's no downstream impact to our existing sanitary sewer. And that there's no additional impact to the wastewater treatment plant. Now, of course, there is additional flow. Since there nothing exists there now, but the, the small amount of flow that will be received, received by the wastewater treatment plant. Can be adequately accommodated by the wastewater treatment plant. So there's no cause for concern. For sewer flow flows or the additional flows from this development causing any adverse impacts to the city's existing sanitary sewer system. And like councilman Serenades had said, we do have attorney such you on the line. We also have the city engineer Vanessa or attorney such you. Would you like to add anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Carr. For the record, I'm Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrent, Sandec and Hennessy. And I've represented the applicant Fountain Development LLC. From the commencement of the re-subdivision process, as Mr. Carr explained. Also on the line tonight, I believe, is Steve Santa Croche of Rose T. So when they were the civil engineers that designed the sanitary sewer project. To service these five lots. A couple of questions I know have been asked by some members of the council. With respect to notice to neighbors and how will or how have they been advised of this proposal? Just to clarify, the application for re-subdivision required notice to neighbors of the submission that was conducted on. May twentieth, public hearing before the planning commission was conducted in July and notice to neighbors was sent in August, excuse me, June twenty eighth. The notice on the sanitary sewer public hearing before the WPCA was also sent to neighbors on September second. Furthermore, there is an existing dwelling on the property which will be demolished. And notice to neighbors in accordance with the city's demolition ordinance will be conducted and sent to neighbors in accordance with that ordinance. In response to any of these notifications, I received an inquiry, an inquiry from one property owner directly adjacent and gentleman named Sean Rosa, who expressed no. Objection and did not appear at any of the public hearings. And also the owners of the property across the street, the stealth storage facility called Cube Smart. And those individuals did not appear at the public hearings as well. Should there be any other notice that's required by the city in connection with the installation of the sewer extension? Or the development of the lots as five single family residential lots, we will certainly abide by any requirements. I'm not aware of any, but should there be any, we will, my client will certainly abide by those. And I think another question was asked as to what the timeframe is for the start of construction and. Both the installation of the sewer and the development of the lots. At this point, my client doesn't have a firm dot timeline for that. But my, the best estimation is within a year, we will be well into the development of the lots and the installation of the sanitary sewer. To support and serve those lots. If there are any technical questions, as I said, Steve Santa Croche is on the line and he can certainly answer them as well. But I'm happy to answer any other questions anyone may have.
So Chairman, Siranidis, could I ask those questions?
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you, Attorney Suchi. I had. Audio problems at the Public Works Committee and I did send those questions on to Ms. Valderas who's. Subsequently sent them on to you. So I appreciate you answering those questions. And, and, and it just is out of a matter of concern because Fountain Street is a very narrow street. It's probably one of the narrowest streets in the city. And, and that kind of work is taxing on neighbors, not just on Fountain Street, but I'm sure in the community that kind of utilize Fountain Street. And Fountain Street is a very industrial street as well. And so those were really my concerns. And a lot of times when we talk about. Informing neighbors, it's not just folks on that street, but there are folks on, on the side streets that are impacted as well. So. But I appreciate you asking that question, answering those questions. Another question that I did have. Was, and maybe this is really for Mr. Carr and Ms. Valderas. Will there be a need for traffic detours? And then the other issue is where will they leave their. Vehicles or, or the equipment that they're using? Because I know at times in the area when there is development or some sort of project. Their small machineries are left in the area on some of the side streets. So that was one of my other questions and concerns.
Sure. So I could start and Vanessa, please, please fill any gaps in. So the, the maintenance and protection of traffic plan. That will include a plan to not necessarily detour traffic. It really depends on, I know, I know that is an hour street. But their engineer and contractor will have to submit a maintenance and protection of traffic plan. When they apply for a DPW encroachment application. It's basically a street opening permit. We also, DPW, unless it's a matter of, of emergency or sheer need. Do not allow closures of roads unless they're pre-approved way in advance. And we also always. In almost every situation, not every single one, but most situations require alternating traffic. So there's at least one, one way flow from, for vehicle traffic. At the time, now, we don't know what that plan looks like, nor would we be designing it. That would be approved by our office, our department, but that would be provided by the contractor and the engineer that would certify this plan works. And if we look at it. And we realize it's going to adversely impact neighbors or it's going to be a severe disruption, we would give comments and not issue the encroachment permit. I believe the second question was storage and, and, and construction lay down area. They would store the materials in an area that's reasonably close to the site. But again, they have to be very careful because you don't want to block driveways. You don't want it to be unsightly. And most of all, you don't want it to be a safety hazard to the public. Obviously, the area and material, the material storage area would be too far from the site. It would have to be secured. And whether they store it on private property, if they have enough, enough, excuse me, enough space on the property, they could store the equipment there. There's not enough space or there's obstructions that prevent so, prevent them from doing so. They can park the excavator or the machine out in the right away, which the encroachment permit would allow them to do. Vanessa, did I, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's it. We avoid, I just want to add that we avoid having an equipment park on the street. We usually, we do not allow that. So it's just for them to keep the traffic alternated during the day. We usually, we do not allow work at night unless if we feel that it's necessary to complete the work in a better way. For the residents around, but all the equipment usually keeps, it has to be kept off street on a daily basis.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Revolus?
You're on mute, Ms. Revolus.
Sorry, not to beat in the head with a nail, but that was actually brought up, leaving equipment. Not to beat in the head, but if we can make sure of that, because I actually, it's different, but with Woodward, we had. Immensely huge equipment left that actually in an emergency situation caused the fire department. Unable, inability to easily access homes because equipment was left so big. So. Just not to hit it in the barrel, but that being brought up, just, I remembered that. And it was a huge obstruction. So if we can really just truly make sure that equipment doesn't get left overnight or. Left in a situation that can become a hazard. I, I know you just said it, but it just dawned to me with. Councilwoman Young and what was said that, that I literally watched that happen with the working Woodward Avenue. And it was actually a. It was a cause for a problem and it was on a weekend. So it was literally left. So if that, if that could just make sure.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, seven B three, Mr. Siranidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be recusing myself on seven B three, being I'm a member of the St. George Greek Orthodox Church. That being said, I will be passing this on to councilperson and councilperson Tom Livingston. There you go.
All right, thank you.
He will be taking it from here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, John Kites will also be recusing myself for this.
Okay, I appreciate that. So let the record show that councilman Siranidis and councilman Kites have. Himself from this item as a conflict of interest. Mr. Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the item. Approved the proposed sanitary sewer extension at two thirty eight West Rocks Road to provide sanitary sewer service to the St. George Greek. Orthodox Church and potential twelve parcels adjacent to the proposed extension. Through technical analyses, it was confirmed that the city sanitary sewer collection system. And wastewater treatment plant can accommodate the additional senator, sanitary sewer flow generated from the proposed connections. The proposed sanitary sewer extension shall be constructed in accordance with DPW. And WPCA sanitary sewer permit process and sanitary sewer main extension policy. Adopted July seventh, two thousand and twenty one and be referred back to the WPCA Board for final acceptance. I have no comment on that. I, it's similar to the prior item, but Mr. Carr is available to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns with item seven B three? Seeing no questions or comments, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously with two recusals. Next item, Mr. Siranidis, item seven B seven.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seven B seven. I'll be moving item seven B seven. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a third amendment to the Woodward and Current Agreement dated August twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. To provide on-call professional engineering services for the storm drainage system evaluation. In accordance with scope of services, Task Water one G Storm Sewer Hydrologic Hydraulic Study. On Glen Denning Street dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, for a sum not to exceed one hundred and ninety one thousand.
Mr. Siranidis?
I just want to say with obviously all the conversation we've recently been having with the flooding and the, the different year storms. It's been a lot on, on many residents across Norwalk. Being from the district, I'm, I'm very familiar with the Glen Denning water situation. I've gone down there. I've spoken to the residents. Again, you know, we, we want to do more. Unfortunately, we're limited to what we have access to. The program we heard of earlier today just goes to show that the city of Norwalk is paying attention. They do care. And we're trying our best to solve some of these problems the best way possible. I want to say we have with us today Chief Carr and. Ms. Valderas, I don't see her, but she's on, there she is. And they could speak even further, being a part of it, listening to the residents, getting the emails. Going out there and seeing firsthand the concerns, the flooding and the damage. They know how, how bad people have been suffering. It's great to see the additional funds, even though it's not an immediate solution. It's going to be a right solution over the, the right amount of time. That being said, if anybody has any questions or any concerns. Mr. Keegan?
Keegan.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, George. And I just want to echo that, that. Thank you to all of my colleagues, the mayor's office, Chief Carr and your staff. For listening to the residents, they have been adversely affected for many years and. It's great when we all stand together on a, you know, something we know is, is for the good of the city and. I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Serenides, item seven B eight.
Seven B eight. I'm gonna move seven B eight. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a third amendment to the Woodward and Current Agreement dated August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. To provide on-call professional engineering services. For the storm drainage system evaluation in accordance with the scope of service, task order one H storm sewer hydrologic hydraulic study. On Glenwood Avenue dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, for a sum not to exceed two hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars, accounts noted. I I'm just gonna quickly reiterate what what was earlier said. We all know the the strain that all these residents and these communities have been under. Once again, I want to thank you, Mayor, thank your staff. Doing, making the effort you've made, getting additional funds, every little bit counts as we know, and and to see that this is. On on the grand scope important and the city's taking a a front run to it. So that being said.
Thank you, Mr. Serenides. Uh any further comments or questions? And uh I'll just make a comment. I do want to thank the staff. I want to thank the council um for recognizing. Uh that this is a situation that once and for all needs to be evaluated and uh resolved. That you know, uh we know we're getting many more storms of a significant uh level. And uh it it's causing wreaking havoc on people's properties, uh properties that have never flooded before. And we want to make sure that we do everything we can uh to mitigate the flooding. And I I want to thank Mr. Carr and his staff for putting their energy, Mr. Miss Valideras. Uh and everybody else for all the hard work they're doing. So having said that, um and seeing no further comments or questions, all in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Revolus.
Oh.
Um I brought this up before. I just wanted to know, not to change anything, but real quick. Do we ever, in these drainage and looking at our draining systems, right? Are we paying attention to how like on our land displacement and building is may help our flooding at all? It doesn't have to be answered now. Just want to know if that's part of looking at things.
Um I can answer that. Um, Ms. Revolus, Mayor, uh if you allow me. Um actually, we have a drainage manual um that we implemented in two thousand seventeen. That helps that. So uh for every new construction or renovation that um happens in the city. Uh the applicant has to come in front of DPW with a drainage plan that meets our uh requirement. So now what we require is that. You have to hold um water into your property before the runoff goes through the city system. So this is a good way to now do not add more runoffs to our system and then every. Uh parcel will have to hold water up to a hundred years to.
Are we catching people? That's great. And are we also um in this catching like um drainage that is isn't po- proper like or illegal or? Stuff of that nature. And that's my last question.
Um we, if it is, we, if it is existing. We usually, it's very hard for us to see what is illegal unless if we're doing a project. So let's say if we're doing something on the street and we realize that there's something illegal, we will address that. But usually on the new uh developments or redevelopments that will happen. In the city that they have to come with the application, then we evaluate that and nothing can cannot be legal, has to be legal. They need our sign off to go get a plan approval and after a building permit.
Thank you so much.
Unless there's any change in the vote, uh based on Mrs. Ms. Val- Validera's answers. Um this motion has been carried and approved unanimously. So thank you. Uh next item is seven. B eleven, Mr. Serenides. This is your show tonight.
Still up, still up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be moving item seven B eleven. Approve the revisions to the City of Norwalk Department of Public Works standard detailed drawings, historical lights, light poles. Light pole foundations and conduit trenching. A incorporating the new proposed forty watt, two thousand, two thousand seven hundred Kelvins. William and Mary style dark sky compliant fixture that South Moak Electric and Water. Is proposing within the second taxing district. B. For the other districts, all new ornamental lighting fixtures should be dark sky compliant with luminous levels. Not to exceed recommended IES standard of twenty-seven hundred Kelvin or three thousand Kelvin for color temperature.
So Mr. Serenides has moved the item. Uh would you like to comment, Mr. Serenides?
Briefly, we have with us tonight. I feel like I've been speaking all night. Now I know how you feel. Uh briefly, we have with us today, uh Mr. Huth from SNEW, and he can answer any additional questions and um. Explain the change. Uh this project is being funded by SNEW, so it's a no cost to the city project for the changeover. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief or Ms. Valderez. Um this should be a no cost to the city for the South Moak project. The changeover to this lighting system is conducive with the current situation with. Stopping the light in the apartments that are above with the dark sky feature. It's also going to LED, which is a much more efficient lighting system, and the Kelvins are more. True light or sunlight versus the really, really bright light, white light used to see. So it it's a more. Um visual friendly light. That being said, we have with us everybody. So any questions, feel free to ask.
We have Mr. Huth and Mr. Westmoreland both here.
I I no, yes, Mayor, I was going to say, both gentlemen are on, and it'd be great if they could give just a description of what the dark sky. Is really um going to enhance um visibility. Um within South Norwalk and hopefully other areas of the city because it was really, really impressive.
Uh thank you.
Okay, Mr. Huth or Mr. Westmoreland?
Sure, I I'd be happy to step in if you allow me. Uh good evening, uh council members. Um Mayor Harry Rilling, uh Mayor Rilling. Uh so my name is Alan Huth. I'm the general manager of South Norwalk Electric and Water. For those. You that may know, uh South Norwalk Electric and Water has been specific, has specified, installed and maintained city street lighting in the second taxing district. Since uh we started generating electricity in eighteen ninety-two. The uh we just uh completed a project to replace all of the overhead. Uh cities Cobra style streetlights. These are the highlights that are on the regular utility poles. Uh but so those were just completed. Those are all full cutoff fixtures that that help reduce glare. Uh and light trespass into people's homes and apartments. Um and part of that scope was to retrofit our old uh ornamental lights uh throughout the historic district. The problem of that is that the existing, our our existing specification uh was created in nineteen eighty. Uh and as some of you may notice, have noticed, there uh you know, these large plastic globes and similar to a. Uh an old, you know, car headlight, they've yellowed tremendously over the, over time. Um so they just aren't uh worth uh. Retrofitting those existing lights. They really need to be replaced. But there's another issue, and the other issue that that we noticed, and which is why we waited uh to this point. There's been multiple specifications of lights installed where uh there are just differences in specifications. So now what we're left with are. A multitude of different color lights uh and different style lights, even on one street, Monroe Street, for example. Um I'd be happy to share the screen. Um I do have a picture to kind of illustrate that. Uh am I able to share the screen? Uh to try.
I think that would have to be authorized by the host.
I think that works. Does everybody see this screen?
Yes.
So so this is just one picture that I have as an example on Monroe Street. Where we have the the light in the beginning is a very blue-white. Uh four thousand plus Kelvin color uh temperature fixture, and then just a few fixtures down, you can see. The old traditional uh orange style globes. Um so what we uh. What we want to do is uh replace all of these lights at our cost. With uh here, I'll show one more with the new uh new spec. Can everybody see this fixture here?
Hmm, yes.
So this is the William and Mary spec uh spec fixture, and we're looking. We've already met with department with our own commission of the second taxing district. Uh which we've voted on it ourselves. We brought it to the Department of Public Works and um approved it through there. And we're just looking for common counsel blessings so that we can move forward with this project and replace the lights. At our cost in the city. We've been working on this. Uh pushing this through for um almost a year. There are four of these lights currently installed on um. Right across from um, I guess they call that the ironworks on Washington Boulevard. And and one of the main reasons why we want to go dark sky compliant is uh because this is a movement that started. Uh about two decades ago where um. We, you know, cities and towns are trying to reduce the amount of glare. We we've received a number of complaints from. Apartment dwellers in second and even third floor apartments from the existing lights because they're blaring up into bedrooms and. Um and people have complained about it. And the only way we're going to fix that is to uh just simply replace these fixtures and bring it up to date with a more modern. Fixer and the color. Um uh we we want this, uh what we're specifying is twenty-seven hundred Kelvin. Which will mimic a standard incandescent light bulb. It's a warm comforting light. It's not a blue bright light. So um we have them specified. We're ready to place the order. We've hit them out to a local contractor. Uh and we're just simply waiting for, um this is the last step here tonight. For everyone to give us the blessing so we can move forward with this project at our cost. And that's all I have.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Serenides?
Mayor, I failed to mention, I apologize. We have with us uh Mr. Westmoreland today. And uh it did go by the Historic Society, Mr. Westmoreland's here to speak on it any further. If anybody has any questions, they approved that the design sticks with the historic look of South Norwalk.
Mr. Westmoreland?
Uh yes, that's correct. I'm actually, and I have two hats on tonight. I'm Chair of the Second taxing District as well for full disclosure. Funding the project, we think this is going to be a huge difference to uh South Norwalk in in adopting the standing for those, the standard for the whole city. Uh so that um we have improved lighting that doesn't glare uh into drivers' eyes as well as uh shine up into um. People who live on the second, third and fourth floors of buildings, which is the current problem now. I mean, it's kind of a shame that Soundview Landing. You you walked uh down Day Street and, you know, all of the living room window, they 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 basically have blackout blinds on all the windows right now. Because the the bright lights shine into those apartments. So this will fix that and uh. Uh I think will be a big improvement. And of course, the people on Washington Street have lived with it for years. So we're happy to move this one along. Oh, and I do want to say that this isn't, this isn't reducing any. Any of the light, the amount of light that actually hits the street, you know, where people are walking. It's. It it's actually the same amount of light gets put out. It's just in a more pleasant color, uh and it's not shining light upwards and outwards and around. So.
Ms. Smith?
Um yes, I just um wanted to thank Mr. Westmoreland uh for giving the tour to myself, Ms. Young and Mr. Livingston. To actually be able to walk and and focus on the lighting. You know, you drive down Washington Street, even if you're walking, having dinner, you're not really. You know, looking up at the lights, but to focus on it like that and really see the difference in the lighting and uh the improvement in the quality of life that will happen. For the residents of South Norwalk, there is going to be substantial. Uh it's environmentally sound, it's not costing the city a cent. That's a good thing. Uh but I, you know, uh and I concur, I think um it was Mr. Serenides who said, you know, the effort to, you know, make this um, you know, extend this throughout the city. Um is really good thing. So uh so thank you. Thanks again, David, for that uh for that tour. It was really helpful.
Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um uh this appears to be a great enhancement based upon uh what was um shared with us this evening. And and especially the point that um the cost for the enhancement um is going to be covered by the second task taxing district. My question, though, is if this becomes a standard for the city, who would pay for? Um does this become a city expense or the various taxing districts? Uh does anyone have that answer?
I could, I could be happy to opine on this uh to, this certainly is for now, is for our district. And for any, any new projects going forward. So it wouldn't be an immediate retrofit for any other part of the city. It would just be that new projects would going forward would have to carry that specification. So it wouldn't represent any. Subs- some substantive cost difference to the city, uh even going forward.
Uh Mr. Bernam, I would like to add to what Mr. Huth just said. So what Snow is proposing is to change their light fixtures within their districts. So they're going to be responsible to change within their district. Another thing that we are adding to our standards. Issue throughout the city, we're gonna ask for all new fixtures should be dark sky compliant. And also, we're gonna change the color, the maximum Kelvin color for them. Uh that will only going to apply to the new ones as of today. Um after this get approved and this project buys new gets completed. Um the idea is that DPW was going to reach out to ever source and third taxing district to see if they also will be able to do. Something on their own district that they can change that. Uh we believe there are some grants available for the utility companies that they may be able to apply. And then change and make the existing features um meeting the new standards. But now all new developers that comes that usually they are responsible to install um the light fixtures on the street. They're gonna need to install the new models.
Ms. Revolus?
Thank you.
I was actually just going to say, um I'm a, I'm a, it's funny, I wasn't asked because I'm a heavy walker out here. I am. And that's actually one of the things I pay attention, just looking up for no reason, like why are our lights so different? And it's, it's so funny, you show the picture because I know exactly why, because I look at that all the time. So it just drives me a little bit crazy, but um. So it's great to see that that would especially like not only throughout, throughout Norwalk be good. Um I did a little, a little bit of research, and what I did really like about this too. Um is the fact that how overall you just explained about shining in homes, right? But what I found, and I wanted to see if you would speak to, is that this lighting actually overall at night too, for people who live or see it, can actually help sleep. And be um help people sleep longer, which I thought that was pretty cool. I thought that was, I thought especially for an overall more holistic Norwalk. Sleep, sleep abnormalities, anything that helps that is amazing. But as a, as a walker who will walk from South Norwalk to Route seven. I actually pay attention to the lights and how they look. And I think it's a brilliant aesthetic. To change that up and um but the small benefits that we do for our, for our residents. Um in South Norwalk or anywhere in Norwalk I'm for. But I just wanted to speak to that and the fact that that is actually something just randomly looking like, just looking at the moon or the stars. I look at our lights and why they are like mismatched. And I just realized I had that from the picture. So this is great. I appreciate seeing it, but I just wanted to speak to that too for our residents.
Thank you. Any further comments? Uh Ms. Young?
I want to thank David and and Alan um for their vision. No pun intended. We can really see with with the lights now. Um. Um it's a good thing for for South Norwalk and and as 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 Councilwoman Revolus said, as a walker, but as someone who's driving at night. I mean, there are all kinds of scenarios where lighting impacts your vision. And so it's just a good thing. To see this, this change taking place in South Norwalk, and it should take place all across the city and and hopefully to Councilman Greg, uh Greg Burnett's uh. A point that's something that can be done um eventually throughout the city. So that we can all see where we're going a lot better. So and as I get older, these eyes don't help. And then so. Um I need all the help I can get out there on the street. So um just thank you. To everybody and 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 to 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 uh Mr. Carr and Vanessa and just the whole.
So just thank you to everybody and, and to, to, to Mr. Carr and Vanessa and just the whole team for making this happen.
Any further questions?
The reason why I parked my car to help, yeah, but because of glare. So I am a driver, but that's part of being a walker. So she's made a very valid point too.
Okay, any further comments? I would imagine also these are much more energy efficient, are they not?
Yes, these, these lights are forty watts versus the existing hundred and fifty watt high pressure sodium bulb. So it will be a significant energy savings.
Another, another indication of Norwalk partnering with our green friends. So thank you. Any further comments or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Ms. Young?
Is that it? Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Okay, I think you were waiting.
I was.
I like that Lisa.
Yeah, I was like, it's too quiet, me.
So on Ms. Young's motion to adjourn, all in favor? Oppose? And I don't think there'd be any abstentions, but thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you for all who participated tonight and have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned.